Do we need to do something with our email?
Yes.
It is now seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order.
And all councilors are present.
Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special announcements?
There are none.
Public hearings.
4A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an indoor entertainment-oriented venue in a C2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 1703 Park Avenue.
Ms. Christensen.
This property is at the northeast corner of Park Avenue and Summit Avenue. There are residential uses to the northeast and south of the property. There's a bank to the west, located on the opposite side of the street. It is a former Gerhart's TV repair business, which includes vacant commercial space and two dwelling units. There's 2,720 square feet of floor area, and there's approximately 10 unstriped parking stalls on the property, which are accessible from Summit Avenue. The applicant's intention was to make the first floor of the building available for private parties and receptions. He does not intend to sell any alcoholic beverages, but requested to allow his customers to bring their own beverages. He has been notified that he cannot do that, and he was asked to, if he understood it at Plan Commission. The Plan Commissioners made sure that he understood the rules about alcohol. This, a public notice was published in the paper and mailed to the neighboring property owners, and we did, were contacted by five neighboring property owners, including First Community Credit Union, who are opposed to the use due to concerns about traffic, parking noise, and loitering. The city engineer did review this request and expressed concern about the lack of off-street parking, which would cause customers to park on-street, which is actually not allowed. If you put it in new use, he would have to provide a shared parking within 500 feet of his building. At least 101 stall per 150 square foot of floor area is required, and he would have to either meet the requirement or do it through a parking agreement. The proposed indoor entertainment-oriented venue, given its size, could likely draw a large group of people to special events at various times of the day. It's surrounded mostly by residential uses, which is why staff recommended denial, and then Plan Commission reviewed this item on November 22nd, and also, and voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend denial of the conditional use permit. And Plan Commission, just so you're aware, and Councilor Levy can attest to, is that they spent quite a bit of time talking with the applicant, who is here this evening, and kind of talking through, like, what some options were. And he had just communicated that he was just trying to come up with some way to use the building, that he owned the building, and he, I don't think he's trying to negatively impact the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. But Plan Commission did recommend denial of this particular use.
I think that that block is, there's only one other business on that block per se, and that would be the gas station in the corner, but the rest is residential, then, is that correct? Are there questions for Ms. Christensen? Counselor DeForest.
Do you want to have the public hearing first?
This is a public hearing, so anybody who'd like to speak to this matter may step forward at this time. Please give your name and your address. First call. Second call. Third and final call for public hearing. That will close the public hearing. Are there questions? Did you wish to speak, sir?
Well, I'm here, is that okay?
Yes, please come down. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Please, please give your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Mario. I'm the owner of the 1703 Park Avenue, okay?
Is that your, your home address then, too, sir?
Yeah, 1703 Park Avenue.
Okay.
So I'm the owner. No, I'm just kind of like, trying, I'm trying, you know, to do that thing, the, whatever that thing. So, my English is broken, so hopefully you understand. So, okay. No, I just try, you know, like, try to do that one, okay. People have been going right there, you know, to rent my, my property, okay? But I've been talking to them, but at the final, they do not show up again, so. And then I apply for that one to see if it's approved. Technically, right now, that's when I'm here, right now. After that, somebody else came with me to, to, to apply for rent, and then I told her, it was a lady, about that I'm ready for, for that one, so she needs to wait a little bit if it's approved on this one, in this case. So, he does approve, so it's, I mean, I can talk to her about business of her, I mean. So, you guys know better than me, so you're the bosses, so you decide, you guys decide to approve it, that's fine, and that, I'm gonna continue, you know, with people who really, it's okay for renting right there, so I'm gonna continue. So technically, I just try, you know, because the idea is try, you know what I mean? Hopefully, I mean, the idea is try, you know what I mean? Like, my idea is try. If you guys say no, throw away, you know what I mean, throw away that idea, since already passed or whatever, and then continue with the next step. That's my idea. So technically, you're the boss.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for explaining to us. Again, if I wasn't clear, anybody else who'd like to speak on this matter? This will be the final call. Okay, that will close the hearing. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Tried to push it out, thank you.
Okay, you're, you're on.
I just, I want to make sure that you were understood at the Plan Commission hearing. Did you have a translator there at the meeting for him?
Conversation with him, so I mean, I felt like he communicated okay with us.
Offer one to him?
He didn't ask for one. I didn't know he needed one.
Do we offer him one, though?
I don't, I didn't speak to him before the meeting, so I didn't realize he needed a translator. I, and we had a changeover in staff, so I mean, Alex was working with him, and then Alex left, so, no, I don't know that we offered him a translator. I honestly can't speak to that one way or another.
I guess I'm just not feeling comfortable proceeding until we offer him a translator to make sure he's understanding the process and what the questions that were raised at Plan Commission and the questions that we have.
If I, if I may jump in here, I was at that meeting, and I, my feeling is that there is a mutual understanding that we asked specific questions, what are your plans for the use of the building, and he was able to answer those questions. He also, at one time, had spoke about having the building, not selling alcohol, but allowing people, at that time, if they wanted to party, to bring in their own liquor to the party, to the establishment. We explained to him that he couldn't do that. He understood that, and I see him nodding in affirmative up there, so he understood that. And he, at one point, he even said, "Well, thanks for letting me know that, because I didn't know that I could not have people bring their own beverages to the party." So every time we would ask a question, we would make sure that he understood, and there were times he would ask us questions, and we made sure that he understood what we were saying. And Coach, at that time, the chairperson of the committee, even asked before we sat down, "Do you fully understand what we just, what we just talked about here?" He said he fully understood. We fully understood what he said, and, and as Julie said, we took a lot of time to make sure that everybody understood. So this was not, we did not rush it. We actually took our time with it to make sure that he understood the entire conversation.
And Matt Finnegan.
So I'm comfortable with, and he's here, but I'm comfortable with the dialogue that took place.
And Matt Finnegan actually had suggested to him that instead of, who's on Plan Commission, that instead of coming himself, that if he, because he had mentioned that he had a young lady, or he would say young, a lady who wanted to do a photography studio, and Matt had suggested that he have her come to the city and go through the process instead of him, because it's hard to speak for somebody else's business model. And he thanked Matt for giving him the advice, and he appreciated it, that he would continue to go through this process, but if it didn't work out, you know, he'd work with the lady with the photography studio. So, I mean, I felt like we were understanding each other, but...
Okay, so can I ask him a question, then, so I can feel comfortable that he's understanding?
Go ahead.
Would you mind if I asked you a question, please? Thank you. What are your plans for the business if we don't approve tonight?
Okay, if you don't approve, okay, I'm gonna continue, like I said to you, for people who really need to go, to progress, I mean, to go forward in business, okay? For example, I have those two little things available for people who really wants to go in business, like this photographer, is a lady, she talked to me about it, so, and I told her about it, if it's not approved, this thing, you know what I mean, this thing, so I'm gonna talk to her. Hopefully, she be available, I mean, again, because when she, when I talk to her, it was a long time ago, I'm talking, maybe a month, technically, you know what I mean. So, I need to call her again to see if she's available. If she's available, I think what he's saying, I understand everything, my friend, so thank you very much. So, yeah, I'm gonna talk to the lady and send her to you guys, and tell her exactly about a permit, and talking to you guys. And of course, I mean, what I'm trying to tell you is that I'm learning, you know what I mean? So technically, basically, I'm in front of you guys, so I feel like, who am I? Okay, but anyway, my idea is learning, you know what I mean, learning, you know? For me, this is new, so who am I? I don't know. I'm here, so. But everything is okay, I understand everything. You have any question? I think, do you have the answer already?
I think so. Do you understand, what are the, do you understand what the approved uses are for that building right now? What, what, what can you do in that building right now? Do you know?
What can I do?
Yes, in terms of what's approved for this zoning.
Right now, all I can say to you that, on that building, so I can technically, if I get somebody, I have to send it to you guys, you know what I mean? If they, you guys say okay, I'm gonna accept it, you know what I mean? Okay, for example, somebody, you come over here with me, so I'm gonna send it to you guys, take the permit with you guys, if you guys, I mean, you accept it, I'm gonna accept it.
I don't, it doesn't seem like you understand that there are approved uses already for that building.
Oh, yeah, technically, yes.
You know what those are?
The uses?
Yes.
Like, is that available, you mean, on everything?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. My idea is, for example, if somebody come, like a photographer, okay? And we are talking, you know, like, talking like normal, and then we deal, this is our deal. So I think on that, I need, I think I need to bring somebody, you know, like, checking, you know, and say, is it approved? Well, I mean, I'm talking to, what's the name of that guy? What, you know what I mean? So, it's a guy that go and check, if he needs something, we need to do it or repair it, you know what I mean? So I'm talking to the lady who come with me. You got me? All right?
Well, you know, and I apologize to you.
No, I know.
In my opinion, I think that, that we, we, we need to do a better job of sitting down and talking with you and helping you understand the process and what the zoning entails and what this means. And so I'm feeling a little uncomfortable with this. I, I mean, I appreciate that you're here, that you're answering our questions, but it appears to me you don't really understand the zoning as it exists now and what that means. And, you know, let's say even if we vote against this tonight, you're gonna leave here and still be confused about what you can do in your, in your property. So that, that concerns me greatly.
So you mean that you're gonna go there and see what can I do? Things, things like to progress?
I really think staff needs to meet with you and...
Yeah.
Alex did meet with him four or five times. I mean, no, applicants, usually small businesses, don't know all of their approved uses that they can have for zoning, and Alex did work with Mr. Mendoza. You did meet with Alex on multiple occasions, and even though he was, he was told that this might be recommended for denial, he wanted to come before you and ask, "Let the governing board decide that." So I mean, I know that Alex did meet with him on numerous occasions about what he could do with his property. So, I mean, we don't have a translator here tonight, but I do feel that staff did work and meet with Mr. Mendoza, and Drew will continue to work with him. If he does get denied tonight, he can come into the office and make an appointment to meet with Drew.
That's the key factor, that after this meeting, they can, he can come back and talk to you or any of your staff, and that's because, for any business, there are conditional uses and there are uses that are approved, but any business will face this.
If I could just follow up with one more thing about that. I appreciate this, the staff's meeting with him and their willingness to meet with him. However, this can be complicated to understand, even for someone, this isn't their native language, and so I would ask that we provide some translation assistance, because you could ask him, "Does he understand?" And he's gonna say yes. And so, if we could please make that extra effort and meet with him with a translator, that I would feel much more comfortable about that. I just think that's important.
I think you guys invite her right there, no? Maybe she could help me.
Our city manager, go ahead.
I don't know.
Laurie, did you want to respond?
I just want to make a cautionary note that we shouldn't assume what someone does or does not want, and without the specific request, I don't want to imply that we think that you need to have a translator. We're happy to have one if you wish to have one, but we aren't going to make that decision on our own behalf until that request is made of us, because I think that can be insulting to some individuals, and I want to be very conscientious about how we approach people who have specific and individual needs.
I understand that, however, clearly, right now, we can see he's having trouble understanding what we're talking about, and so we offer, then, in that case.
I think our city manager made it very clear, let the individual ask. Okay, one more. Mark Preschel, go ahead.
Mr. Mendoza, thank you.
Thank, thank you for, for trying to do something with this property. It's been sitting there forlorn for a long time. In the past, it's been a retail space, it's been a salon, I could see it as a photography studio. Those are probably all uses that are within its, its current zoning. I'm hoping that you, there are resources in, in the city that can help you pursue a business plan for that location, and if there are, you know, I don't know if they come through the chamber, or if they would come through our development office or whatever, but certainly we have, we have people in the city who can help you, you know, define a, define a use and develop a business plan. And so I'm sure there are resources here that they can direct you to, and I'm hoping they can, you know, because it needs, it's, it's an obvious use, and it needs some use, and I think retail would be fine in there. There's a lot of things that could go in there that would not have all these hoops to jump through that you've had to go through to, to get to where we are tonight. It's, an entertainment venue is certainly not the thing to go in that location. It's too small, there's too many things wrong with that particular use. And I, it's nothing, I admire you trying to do something, because I've been looking at that building for 20 years, and it needs help, and I'm glad somebody's willing to step forward and do it. So I just wanted to let you know, and I'm hoping that the city staff or, or somebody in, in the Hispanic community, perhaps even, can help you work out a business plan, because there are resources in town available to you that can help that happen.
That's my idea, you know, like, be part of you guys, you know, like, like I'm asking you help, because when somebody's on the bottom, we try, you know, try or whatever.
That's exactly what, that's a great way, it's time to take advantage of that. Thank you.
The idea is go to the right way.
Counselor Sleniker.
Would you like me to ask him in Spanish if he understands what's going on?
I think, I think that's, we're pushing it too far. I think, that's my opinion. I think, I don't want to insult anybody's intelligence.
I understand.
Okay, but thank you for the offer. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks very much. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Preschel.
Why don't we be specific with the motion, given the nature of the question?
Your motion is? Counselor Preschel?
I'll, I...
To approve denial?
To approve.
I would move, I would move that we approve it.
Okay. And seconded by Duncan. All in favor of approval, say aye. All, disapproval? Say nay.
Nay.
Passes 7-0. The motion denied 7-0.
Resolution denied, yeah.
4B is a proposed ordinance amending the City of Beloit zoning district map to change the zoning district classification of the properties located at 631, 640, 654, and 657 Bluff Street from R1B Single Family Residential District to the Office District. This is first reading.
Ms. Christensen.
You recently approved a comprehensive plan amendment, and from, to the future land use map from single-family residential to office. This is then the zoning piece, which would actually rezone the property from single-family to office use. This new district includes the chiropractor office, 640 Bluff, any adjacent parking lot, Grinnell Hall, and the church, United Church of Beloit, I think it is. And so it would allow some of these uses to actually be conforming, which currently are legal non-conforming, so it would make many of them permitted, and then it would make multifamily uses at 640 Bluff conditional, which would allow both the public and the council to have a say on how that would be reused as multifamily, because that is actually a vacant structure. So that was the impetus for bringing this action forward. It's on your agenda for public hearing and first reading.
Public hearing will now open for 631, 640, 654, and 657 Bluff Street. First call. Second call. Anybody who'd like to speak? Third and final call. That will close the public hearing. Any comments?
Could I make a motion to suspend the, suspend the rules and proceed with the...
Second, third readings at this time?
Is there a second?
Clear this.
Second.
Second by Levy. All in favor of suspending rules, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes 7-0.
Let me, let me clarify real quick. We've covered this on the earlier, at an earlier time with the zoning, I think it was...
With the comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan amendment. So this is basically a repeat of that to bring zoning into compliance with the comprehensive plan, so that's the reason I would make that suggestion. Thank you.
Is there now a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve with the clarification that there's, there have been three public hearings about this issue, and that's what you're trying to get at.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Motion, motion by DeForest.
I'll second.
Seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Citizens' participation. At this time, any citizen who'd like to speak to the council, come forward, please give us your name and address, refrain from any personal attacks, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Okay? First call for public hearing. Citizens' participation, I'm sorry. Second call. Third and final call for citizen participation. Okay, that will close citizen participation consent agenda.
All items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member shall request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would anybody like anything removed? Just that, Counselor DeForest.
I'd like to request that item E be removed, please.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this time, is there a motion for consent agenda for items A, B, C, and D?
We'll approve that portion of consent agenda.
Motion by Levy, seconded by Sleniker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So A, B, C, and D are approved. E, please.
Item 6E is a resolution rejecting all bids for Public Works contract C16-21 for the Beloit Public Library Blender Cafe.
Mr. Boyson.
This project is to convert the Beloit Public Library Children's Preschool Area and Program Room into the Blender Cafe. Gilbank Construction submitted the lowest of six bids in the amount of $216,200. The low bid was approximately 49% more than the architect's estimate of $145,160. The bids range from $216,200 to $270,160. The budget for the project is $166,000. Since adequate funding is not currently available, rejection of all bids with no award at this time is recommended. The architect may prepare cost-saving revisions and/or additional funding would be needed to be identified for a potential revised project to be rebid early next year. Thank you.
Questions, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. My question has to do with that last point. There is pretty wide open about whether the, the bid proposals would be revised, the design would be revised, or if additional funding would be secured. Do we know if Mr. Demasas or maybe City Manager Luther, which route we're going?
I can take it.
Manager Luther.
Thank you. What I know for certainty, with certainty, is that the city's obligation is capped at the $100,000 investment that was approved in the prior year CIP. So the library may be pursuing both options, in fact, and looking at the potential of additional private resources to support their project, and revisions for cost savings as well. But I know that they will not be coming back to the city for additional funding for this project.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor DeForest.
Yeah, if I can just ask, I understand that our liability is capped at a certain amount, although I feel like we have a little bit of skin in the game, because we want you to be successful, because I know that the original plan was you were going to be going to some of these private resources to help with the startup and equipment, and I just want to make sure by tapping into some of those resources to actually get the space built, you're still gonna be okay with the other components that you needed in place? Is that, are you gonna be okay?
Yes.
Yes, if it's just a guess, then...
Okay, then it's just a guess.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. Brevity. Any other questions for...
I know.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So...
Moved by Preschel, seconded by Sleniker. All in favor of rejecting all bids, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Ordinances?
There are no ordinances, nor are there appointments.
Okay, councilor, activities and upcoming events. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Let me get there in my notes. Sorry. I was pleased to attend Community Action's Thanksgiving meal and was able to be there with others who volunteer to work with the youth at Community Action. I've been privileged to be able to volunteer twice a week with the mentoring program there with youth throughout the year, and was able to meet some of the other volunteers who are contributing a lot of time to really support the youth. And I want to thank all of them for the work that they do. These are some of our silent heroes that we never hear about. They don't get any public accolades, but we have some other volunteers that are there every single week mentoring the youth as volunteers, and so just want to thank them. I was pleased to be able to judge the lighted holiday parade. What a joy that was. Very fun, and we had some wonderful floats, and it was a tough decision in judging. What a great turnout. I think in all the years that I've been there to participate in the parade and see it, even when my kids were very, very little, I think this was the biggest turnout we've ever had that I can remember. It was incredible. So it was a wonderful event to bring the community together and unite downtown. And then also had the opportunity to go to Hollidazzle just a short time after that, and really appreciated the turnout there. I think the warm weather certainly helped us in this case, and it was a beautiful night, and I got to see lots of friends and neighbors. So another wonderful event. Thank you to our Downtown Beloit Association for all they do to organize those events. And finally, I was able to meet with Pastor Robbie, who's a fairly new master minister of Tolman Lutheran Church, and able to speak with her. I'm excited for her interest in really working with the community to support our efforts in the Merrill neighborhood, and I'm so appreciative of her willingness to, to meet with me and express her congregation's interest in supporting the NARSA grant that hopefully will be submitting soon, and just really appreciate all of the community leaders who have really expressed a willingness to collaborate with us to do its best for the City of Beloit. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sleniker.
Yes, I had an opportunity to go to Hollidazzle for the first year. It was a very nice event. I went to the Fine Arts Incubator and was able to see a lot of the local paintings and things, so I really enjoyed that and appreciate, you know, the events that the Downtown Business Association has put on. And then I had a chance to go to, I don't know if this was the name of the event, the meet and greet at the library with the local authors. It was really neat to see the authors that we have in our community. It was a good turnout. community, um, it was a good turnout, uh, a lot of different authors, um, a lot of different styles of writing, um, to meet them and talk to them and know they're from the community, so, and that's all that I had.
Thank you. Counselor Duncan.
I just have a couple things really quick, um, I'll echo some of the things that Sheila said, I would like to thank the Downtown Beloit Association, the staff and participants for their work with the Lighted Parade, um, I went, this is my first time this year, I went with my daughter and my grandchildren, so I felt it was a wonderful event for our community to kick off the holiday season, so that was great, and I also wanted to mention that, um, I am excited to participate in the implicit bias training that we're having in the morning with all the, with all of my other colleagues, so special thanks to our city manager for helping to make this happen, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Preschel.
I too attended the Lighted Parade, um, it was quite a crowd this year, but, um, yeah, it was an amazing floats, um, and some amazing, uh, uh, crowd responses, uh, it still amazes me that in the middle of the night like that, in the dark out there, nobody gets hurt, 'cause it gets pretty crowded along that street, but everybody behaved themselves, it turned out real nice. Hollidazzle was so well-attended that I couldn't see out the windows of the building I work in for about three and a half hours, so I'm assuming it was really good, 'cause it looked like the street was full of people, um, and also, last week, I was called about the, the new smaller waste bins have arrived, and I received mine, and I was assured that everybody in the city that requested the smaller waste bins will be getting theirs, if they haven't already, um, there was nobody that was gonna get missed in that, and I don't know if you can still request a smaller bin, but they did a marvelous job of getting them out there and, um, and very responsive, and they fit my garage perfectly, I can now get my car in if I need to, and, uh, very thankful to DPW being responsive and getting that done, thank you.
Counselor Levy.
Thank you, uh, wonderful time at the, uh, Holiday Parade, I go every year and take my granddaughter, and it seems like it gets colder and colder every year, but, uh, we brave the weather, uh, and it's, it's a good time. The one, the one thing that I will caution, um, people is, it seems as though the road gets narrower and there, as they throw the candy, the kids run closer and closer to the streets, so the fire trucks and stuff don't have a lot of room to travel, so it's like, well, so, next year, I would encourage the parents to make sure the kids stay further back, uh, they're throwing candy, and I was encouraged this year that most of the people that were distributing candy was actually walking it over to people, handing it out, so I think that's a little safer thing to do, but I think overall, it was a great time. Um, also, as far as Hollidazzle, there was an employee at the, uh, local hotel downtown, which is, also, my daughter was sharing with me how individuals who are not from this area was in, in there talking about what a wonderful city we have, um, and how they love coming to Beloit, 'cause there's so much to do, and the downtown is so, uh, beautiful, and we have a lot going on, so I say that to let the citizens of this city know that we have people outside talking about what a great city we have, uh, we also have people inside, but for the ones who always say we don't have anything to do, or Beloit's not doing anything, I encourage you to look around and see all the positive things that are going on, um, and, and take part of that, and then finally, I would like to recognize, uh, Counselor Regina Hendricks, uh, she received an award from her college, um, uh, for, I won't say exactly the age group that it's for...
It's under.
It's under, for their recognizing, uh, individuals under the age of forty, uh, upcoming and achieving individuals, and I think that was a huge accomplishment, uh, to let you know that we have young people around the world, not only in Beloit, that's doing great things, and I think it's wonderful when their colleges recognize them, but not only that, but when their peers, when she can get back with her peers and see that once they leave college, that they just don't leave there, um, studying, but they go out and make a difference in the world, so, congratulations, uh, to you on your award.
The reason it gets colder at the parade is 'cause you're getting older.
Is that what it is? Dave, Dave, Dave.
I have nothing to add, other than thank you, um, that's where I was, I wasn't just skipping the meeting, I had to go down, down to New Orleans to receive my award, and it was an amazing award ceremony, I had a great time catching up with classmates and things like that, so, and I drove down, so, yeah, it took me a while to get back, but, but I missed you all last meeting, um, but just...
Did you bring back some gumbo first?
I didn't, I brought beignet mix, so I'm like...
Everybody who was served, just line up, uh, next time you take a car, you have a lot of room in that car, okay, just to add, uh, about, the Hollidazzle was fantastic, it reminded me of downtown Beloit many years ago, I won't tell you how old I am, but it just, before the malls and stuff, everybody would go downtown on a Friday, Monday and Friday night, and it was, it was wonderful, it was, I guess cold, but you felt it, I was, uh, I happened to go in where you work, Mark, and, um, I was a little bit, I was a little bit surprised, they had a little piece, he works the choc, tell us where you work.
I work at, at a chocolate, at a candy store downtown Northwood.
Anyway, they had candy samples up there, but for everyone he gave out, he ate a piece too. You ate two, okay, well, then he had two, so, Mark, we gotta talk to you about that.
I think Dave took one too, I do believe, uh-huh.
I'm finding out, Dave, you're finding a lot out on people, but we're not hearing too much what you're not doing or what you're doing, so...
Before I get impeached, but no, every place I went, it was wonderful, went across the street to Stanton Shoes, and some high school students when they're, uh, playing cello, and just, it was just a, and he was selling shoes amongst all this, you know, choir, so, uh, it's just neat, we got the best high school in town, right, guys, gals? Nod your heads, yes. That's all I have, uh, city manager's presentation.
Actually, if I could just make one quick announcement myself, I wanna make sure, um, to remind the public that there is another listening session this Thursday, December 8th, it will be held at the Saint Thomas Catholic Church, um, that is located...
At East Grand.
At 822 East Grand Avenue, um, this will be fully translated, so we are particularly seeking, um, an audience for questions and answers with our police chief, um, to our Spanish-speaking community, so, este jueves, ocho de diciembre, all right?
Thank you. City manager's presentation.
There is none.
Okay, reports from boards and city officers.
So, 11A is a resolution approving the State Plan of Operations Agreement between the State of Wisconsin and the City of Beloit related to the LISO program.
Chief Sabowski.
Good evening, uh, with this resolution, you are approving our prior acquisition of four military rifles for our honor guard, so the State Plan of Operations requires a new agreement, which must be, uh, approved by the legislative body.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Moved by Hendricks. Seconded by DeForest, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. B.
11B is a resolution authorizing the City of Beloit to apply for the 2017 Alcohol Enforcement Task Grant for the State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation Bureau of Transportation Safety.
Chief.
Uh, with this grant application, or the, in the request to apply for the grant, we'll be administering the OWI grant, which is a $50,000 grant for the county, so Beloit PD and four other agencies that we're partnering with, so that will give us the opportunity to administer the grant, have some oversight in its operations, um, the state is changing the way that they're administering these grants, they're splitting them up amongst different agencies, previously, Rock County administered all the grants.
Do you know how much is forward, chief?
Uh, we would get approximately thirteen-five, it would be twenty deployments between December and September of next year for just strictly OWI enforcement in the City of Beloit.
Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Counselor DeForest.
Sorry, thank you, I'm sorry I didn't get to email this to you, the email is down, um, there is, I just wanted to point, there's a typo in page sixty-seven in the application, just one of the municipalities is listed incorrectly.
Yeah, that's actually, um, that came from the state like that, and we weren't able to correct it, because it was some kind of a PDF form that they sent us, yeah, it says Milwaukee twice.
I saw that, okay, just wanted to make sure Milwaukee got out of there. Thank you, I didn't wanna embarrass you, but it's like, ah, let's get them out of there, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Is there a motion? Moved by Slanicker. Seconded by Hendricks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero, thank you, chief. C.
11C, the city council made during the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stats 1985 Sub 1E to discuss potential real estate transaction, the discussion of which could harm the city's competitive or bargaining interests if held in open session, namely the potential sale of a portion of 1801 Gateway Boulevard.
Is there a motion to go into closed session? Moved by Levy. Seconded by Duncan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero, we'll go to closed session.